Call a meeting order. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No call?
Sharon Genskerovic Township Board.
Jason Jekus Township Board.
Tom Snowden Township Board.
Cody Reynolds, Vinton Township Trustee.
Excuse me, Bart Graham, Office Manager.
Eddie Geitz Township Assistant.
And then as our guests, we have Matt Handowski from the Fire Force and Jason Morris also from the Love Life Services and Fire Force. Thank you gentlemen for being here. Let me finish making my notes. Okay, next. All right, thank you, sir. So this is the last time you're gonna hear me say this, but we're severely backlogged on those meeting minutes. So as you're gonna see here this evening, we have to schedule the public hearing for our budget and our CIP likely here within the next couple of weeks, like within the next two weeks. So we're gonna call a special meeting and in order to kind of save time, we're just, I'm gonna ask you to table these one last time so that we can do them all, that do it all at once. But then also I will add that, you know, we talked about this earlier and we were gonna figure out kind of the capacity on if the township trustee and staff can do the meeting minutes. We'll finish up this year, but as you can tell, it's not a great process. So we're going to have to figure out something at next year's reorganization. So, but for the rest of this year, we will continue to do this and we'll be caught up after this. But I did just want to make that note.
Do I have a motion to table the past minutes?
I move that we table the minutes that are needed for approval till our next board meeting.
Second vote. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tabling the previous meetings.
Thank you. So the last item under old business then is consideration of an extended service contract, contract, excuse me, with Mellon Design Studio. This will be the first item in the packet. As the board and other folks in the room may remember, at our last meeting, we initially took this under consideration. So Mellon Design Studio is, are the folks, Betsy, her name is Betsy, but she created the logo for us. And this would be an extended service contract for her to help us build out and then manage the website as well as make additional promotional materials as needed. So for instance, flyers, hands out, handouts for our public events, table skirts with the logo on it, potentially shirts we talked about as well. So all of this would be contained basically as just a, an hourly contract is what this is put together as. As you may remember from last month, if you look under the retainer fee, this is going to be the issue where we had some discussion and where the board asked us to take this back for further clarification. At the time, it was just billed out at the 10 hours per month minimum for a hundred, a hundred dollars an hour. There wasn't necessarily a specific clause in the last version of the contract that said what happens if, for instance, there were no hours used in that month. So if you look under monthly fee, it still says a thousand dollars per month. And again, that gives you 10 hours. But it says clients will notice, notify service provider that if anticipated work for the upcoming month will be less than half of the customary retainer, at which point a lower amount maybe invoiced per client's direction with a minimum amount of $100. So what that means is that there's just $100 retainer fee to keep the contract and keep that availability open. But basically she, we won't have to pay any outside hours for anything that's not worked, which was a good call and I think a good specification in here. You know, one of the other additional ways we could have looked at it too was just if there was a month where we didn't have the 10 hours, we could bank them. But I think this is clear. And then I think we can just, as the, as the bills come, the invoices come, which I believe this indicates they'll come monthly. They may come actually quarterly from her, just depending on how we get that done. But I think this makes it a lot cleaner.
So I understand that correctly, if there's a hundred dollars a month that we get charged?
Yeah, if you don't use it at all.
Then it banks from month to month if it doesn't get used and then it'll get applied in the bill.
So really, we get, we get up to 10, 10 hours a month of that $100 rate. If there's nothing used at all, it's just about $100 retainer fee. I said the other way we could have looked at it was that banking. This way I think it's cleaner. I think just by doing it this way, it's just a retainer fee of a hundred dollars per month if it's not used at all, which I really don't see us getting away with that because one of the reasons the website was free through I O T is that we agreed to make those regular changes. And so I fully anticipate that for at least the next year and a half, which is the remainder of all of our terms, whether there's additional terms after that for anybody or not. And my point being, I really don't see that work really drying up for the remainder of this term.
Actually, it'd be available to do any campaign work, you know, like for signs or...
Well, so you'd have to talk about that outside of government hours. And that's something you have to take up with your.
With her personally. Okay, just question. Interesting.
Any other questions? That's a good one. All right. So, back over, I'm sorry.
So, and there's no limit on the amount of months that you can just rebuild the month when you're allowed?
I mean, I think this is just an extended, a extended contract from the point that we want to keep it going and to get everything to be done with services, which has been very helpful to us so far. The other way to look at it is we really aren't supposed to sign contracts that should precede the rest of our terms. So in my mind, this contract really doesn't definitely define the life, the shop life of 12/31/2026. Oh, right there, term and termination. Right there. Turn to a clearer one here. So let's take us through all this. Sorry, I should. Second clause from the bottom.
All right.
Question back. Anything else?
Maybe you ask her if you can adjust that to the end of the year for next year, only because.
I mean, I think we can do a verbal extension. This is like we will adjust contracts. She might have to come to a meeting, but I think she'll be able to do that.
Okay, yeah, just, just so it, because, yeah, because next year you wouldn't build this, sign it for the whole year.
Right, we would just sign it to, and yeah, but I think at that point, we would just exercise an extension throughout the year. All right, I'll hand it back to the, the other question.
Do I have a motion to accept the contract?
I move that we accept the contract, client service agreement for Betsy Mellon, Mellon Design Studio of Munster for all the stated rates.
That's right.
That's written. Thank you.
I'll second it. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Motion passes. Okay.
Okay. Okay, next. Next item under new business is reviewing, or I'm sorry, Mr. Board President, we need some new business.
Yeah, is there any other old business? Who wants a new business?
All right. So next up is a review of the draft budget for 2026. So there are actually three items in this one staple packet. The first, one is the first three pages. It says budget form one. This is the annual budget estimate that you all should have seen many times about over by now, although not with this used data yet. Behind those first three pages then is budget form two. That's the estimate of miscellaneous revenue. So that's everything outside of property taxes that we expect to receive for 2026. So all additional revenue. And then the final page in there is titled notice to taxpayers. And that's the public notice that goes out on the gateway. And then that will also be published in the newspaper for the public hearing. So I just wanted you to know it had all three documents in there. But we'll go ahead and start at the very top of this. And this is obviously intended as, this is not a decisional moment. This would be considered first reading of the budget. As I think everybody in the room knows, we are required to have a public hearing as well as then a follow-up adoption meeting more than, that can be held, or it's the publication dates that are in the level of 10 days, no more than, no less than 10 days before the event. So this will go through, we'll do the first reading of the budget. We'll go through the major, through the major funds as well as the major line items. We'll pause then at that point to get the board's feedback, which is where the point is purposely tonight, make sure that the board is largely on board with the direction the budget goes before we put it out for publication, public review. And then we'll work our way through the form two and the public members. So, starting with budget form one, the, when you look for a fund total, that's gonna be the rows that are green. So you'll see the one at the bottom, like fourth line on that first page, it says rainy day total of 15,000. That's where you find your budget, that fund total. The lines above it are the individual line items. And so it's gonna work that way all throughout the document. So just as with this year, we budgeted 15,000 rainy day. I recommend maybe doing the same again for next year. One of the reasons we're doing this is that, just as with this year, we're starting to use up the vast majority of our township assistance funds. I imagine that by the end of September, we will probably largely have exhausted the rest of our township assistance funds. Maybe we make it to October. But the township trustee is empowered to use the rainy day funds in any way here she really sees good, as long as it's legal. And one of those ways that we plan to use that is to, as additional funding to pay for township assistance. So outside of the weekly fund directly here in our budget, in that fund, we will then offset that with additional spending from the rainy day fund. Any questions about the dollar amount or the purpose of the rainy day fund for next year? Okay. The next budget, although you can't, you can't fuck it, excuse me, although you can't see it, because the line, the fund header is not on, until the second page, is the general fund. So this is the one that has the vast majority of our line item, line items in it. So we'll go through it step by step. For the salary, the trustee and the salary of clerical help, again, we'll do the salary ordinance after we pass the budget. So we won't do that until the end of September. But in general, it was a 5% increase for the trustee and the clerical help. So that would be the office manager, the township assistance clerk, the township gardener, and the maintenance person for the community center. Pay of township board, we went with a 2% raise because we wanted 3% raise last year. So that's still 5% over two years. Unemployed compensation, social security, perf, those were all just increased basically to offset needs. Obviously, everything goes up, everything, every year. And all, a lot of those things, pretty much all of those things go off P E's base pay. So we had to up that accordingly. Stationary and operating supplies, stationary and office supplies went up a little bit just to meet the cost of inflation. Operating supplies, we didn't really move because we don't generally use all of that anyway. So it's just there as an additional supply line item for us should we need it. Professional services went up by a fair amount. So this is where we pay for legal services. This is where we pay for almost all of our contractual services outside of fire and mowing. This is where we pay for anything else that comes up for the year where we have to have it like made or. She would be included in that as well. So what he, what I mean by she would be included is I mean Mellon Design Studio can be paid out of that bucket as well. And so we will probably use everything we budgeted this year. And I think this year was budgeted to 14.5 or 15.7. So we went up. The I T A dues line, that went up more than double. One of those reasons is the I T A has indicated they're going to be increasing their dues this year, or this coming year. Frankly, they need to because there's a lot of upcoming costs that they're going to have to front. So not knowing exactly how that's gonna play out, I do a little bit more to double that, just so I pay for the same. Anything in that line item, we can use to pay for anything at the I T A that's outside of dues. So when we go to conferences, if we go to one of the other training sessions, if, if there is any leftover money in that line item, we can use it to pay for those things too. Sign zero, we won't have anything in there for probably another couple of years. Travel expenses, we just did a marginal increase on this year. Obviously, there has been increased travel this year now that I'm on the I T A board of directors. I have to go down to those quarterly meetings as well as some other events that they host regularly. Printing and advertising largely unchanged, office bonds largely unchanged. Other insurance, that's how I pay for the insurance for this building. I went up by about a grand on what we budgeted. I anticipate we will have some left in it, just like we do this year. But as everybody knows, that's a one-time annual expense. Utility services, we went up by about 3,500, $4,000 because of the increases we're seeing. We, I think the board knows, we pay for the utility for the community center out of the Parks and Rec fund. We don't pay for it out of the utility line item. But just as a frame of reference, in the July bills for this building and for the community center, we're both north of 300 or 630 dollars. So I know those were bad months. We had a lot of rentals those months as well. And we had a lot of use of the community center and that building's hard to keep cool and people are going in and out. So it's an anticipated cost, but just to keep you all kind of in frame of reference, as these bills are increasing, as the interest rates go up, what we're dealing with. And that's largely why the utility line was increased by, again, 3,500, $4,000, somewhere in there.
Upstairs different.
So it depends on which utility you're talking about. So they pay some of their own bills. They don't pay all of their own bills. And it's just dependent on how it's originally set up. So, just like with the town of Winfield, for instance, we get billed everything. We send them the bill monthly. And they have a formula that they use that I honestly don't know what it is. I've never seen it, that they use to determine what portion of the bills they pay as well. So. Next, repairs and maintenance, 23. So again, we just had a lot of things breaking. I hate to say that, but we have. You know, I tell people, I need another building maintenance problem, like I need a hole, another hole in my head. But, so I upped it a little bit. I didn't want to go too crazy because one of the things we're trying to do is we are trying to balance our cash balances with our needed increases in spending, also given the fact that we know there's going to be the budget shortfalls starting in pay 2027 from the S E A one, the property tax bill. So I'm trying to keep all of these things in line. I know some of these changes are marginal and incremental and I am in complete agreement with you. But I think until we have a clear view of just how that bill is really going to impact us, which nobody really seems to have a great idea, everybody says everybody else is wrong, I think we have to play it safe. And so that's why a lot of these changes are just incremental. Care of cemeteries, I kept it at 5,000 like it was this year. One of the things we're gonna talk about next is the capital improvement plan, the CIP. I worked in a placeholder for the funds for the new fence around the cemetery. It's very much needed. Starting the process to get a bid for that, we're gonna have to spray the south, east, and north faces of that fence because in order to tear it down, you're going to have to get to it. To get to it, you gotta kill all the people that are around it. I say that laughing. I don't mean it's funny, but it's just the reality. And so with that in consideration, what I think we're gonna do is we'll wait to get, I, I didn't want to lock too much money in the budget for next year and risk not being able to reallocate it the year following. Because it, when you do the budget process, it assumes you spend all the money in the budget every year. Obviously, we almost never do spend every dollar. But it doesn't let you assume that. It doesn't let you do the equations and do the worksheets that way. So you have to work off based on bare bones. So my plan then is really for the cemetery, I want to get that done next year. My plan is really to do it very early next year. If we can, like as soon as the ground crews, the companies, the company knows that. I'm waiting for a first quote, see what the price says, to see how many quotes we're gonna have to get. We're obviously gonna get more than one regardless. But to see if we're gonna have to do the, do a formal bidding process. I don't think we will, but I want to find out first. Where I'm going with this is my thought is we would just do an additional budget appropriation early next year to pay for the cost of the cemetery. So I didn't budget it. I did however, put it in the CIP, the capital improvement plan. We'll see that here in a second. Views and subscriptions, I increased that by $500. And that's simply because the cost of the newspapers that we pay for, it keeps going up. Post Tribune is much more expensive than ours, Northwest Indiana Times. We may ultimately make a decision to go with one paper or the other and not have both. Right now, I like having both because anytime there's a news article that's either about the township or about anything relating to the fire service or anything else, we have access to it. We can view it. We can print it. I think that's been the service. There's also some folks who like the fact that when they come in here, we have extra old copies of the newspaper. They will have to take them and they're free to the public after we look through them and carry some of them. So wouldn't want to let that go necessarily unless we thought it was actually of value and cost saving. Machinery equipment, I kept the same line item as last year, 20,000, just so we have money in there to replace a broken H, you know, HVAC unit or whatever. I do, I have been told that the.
Project.
Well, that's all everything. We'll get there in a second. Furnace for the town side is the oldest furnace in the building and it's not doing, I mean, we've not had a problem with it yet, but sort of a matter of time thing. So I, in my head, that's kinda what that's likely gonna have to go for. And that brings us to the end of the general fund for a total of 246,221 dollars. And on average, just to give you a frame of reference, and this year's a little bit of a misnomer because we had to, we got the roof fixed. We've had some of these other fixes. In general, in a, in a calendar year, we save 50 to 70,000 dollars of our general fund budget that we don't spend. So I'm hoping that on this budget, we might be able to save 50 to 60. But again, it is there in the fact that we need it. And as you'll see later on in this process, even with all of those increased expenditures, and again, assuming we spend everything that's in the budget this year, which I don't believe we will, I still think we're gonna end with a little over $50,000 of budgeted funds. We have 177, 344,000 dollars of just cash balances even after that budget. And that's without.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And that includes the distribution for next year. So they're, they're taking all of next year's budget off, all of this year's budget off, giving us everything they anticipate for next year. And that's still what we would have. So really add another 50 grand to that. You know, in your head, you really have more like 200, 300,000 dollars in the general fund in just cash balances. Any questions about the general fund? Okay. Next, Township Assistance Fund 0840. This is a pretty simple one. We only use line item 5A, other direct relief. This is just how we fund all of the township assistance. This year's was 30,000. We're bumping it up to 32.5. You, again, you're gonna look at that and tell me, Cody, you just said you ran through it all. You're gonna run through it all by the end of September. Why are you only incrementally raising it? And there's a very good reason for that. The reason is that the Township Assistance Fund is our weakest, weakest situated fund or sub-account. My predecessor, my predecessors plural, haven't, haven't been putting money into that fund. They've been putting most of the revenue into the general fund. And so now we find ourselves in a situation where, and we'll go through this in, on the last page of this packet. As you know, we get to allocate the tax revenue that we're receiving, this much to general fund, this much township assistance, this one's Parks and Rec. For next year, what we're doing is we are using about 70,000 dollars of our cash balances to fund our general fund. And those 70,000 dollars that we would otherwise be deriving from the property tax revenue into that, that's actually about 80,000 dollars, we're gonna split and put it into township assistance and Parks and Rec so that we can overfund it for next year so that we can start to build back those cash balances. So again, I went incremental because I'm really looking at it. What I want to do is I want to get it into a situation where every year, if you're calculating our township assistant, assistance budget, like cash balances for the end of the year, that basically I wanted to where we have two years worth of funding at current rate for our township assistance. The goal where I'm trying to get us to. Right now, we don't have that. Right now, I mean, we would have a half of next year's if I, without any new revenue in there. And then like I said, we're gonna drop, I think it's 45,000 dollars of new tax revenue. And that number will come here in a minute into it to help balance it out so that we have enough for next year and most of the year following. We would probably have to do this one more time to this degree to get everything to balance out like we're talking about. Any questions on township assistance? Any questions on township assistance? Okay. Next, Township Fire and EMS, the 1111 fund. So this is our fire general fund and EMS general fund. So these numbers, I talked to the fire chief about this. Basically, what this does is this assumes a 10% increase on the budget for our seasonal contract for the fire department for this year. And those are the lines that you see then reflected. The only one that doesn't have a 10, two, that don't have a 10% increase reflected is line 3B, the automobile expense. So it's the second line down, 3,400. And that's because we pay that same amount annually. So that number didn't need to change. There's not an interest. There's not anything like that. And then if you go to line 3F, so the second from the bottom, it says 15,000 dollars. It, it, it says other, other services and charges. And quite honestly, that's exactly what it is. It's the bucket when they say, hey, you know, the garage doors aren't opening. Or, hey, we had to get the new smokeless or wireless smoke detector put in. Or, hey, it's time to pay the quarterly alert alarm for the smoke and other alarms in the building. That's what we pay it out of. So that's just kind of the fire catchall. So nothing has to go towards any of the contractual obligations. But again, no, we don't need to increase that by 10% because it's not likely to be a 10% increase directly to the fire department. Otherwise, for the contractual payment, the miscellaneous reimbursement, education and training, call-out reimbursement, all of those saw a 10% increase. And again, that's, so that comes to a total, 1111 fund total of 526,180 dollars. And again, that's without touching anything from Q.
We were just alerted that the loan changed percentage. I don't know if you've been made aware of that.
So Kevin did send me something.
Like three to six something percent?
Yeah, it did, right. Cause I think it starts next year.
Yeah.
The only thing about that is Kevin talked about this. And you are correct. And I remember we signed a piece of paper that said we would pay up to 34,000.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So that's why. We know it's a good catch. But Kevin and I were looking at that and I remember opening the.
Yeah. I remember that, the up to, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm with you, but there's, there's a catch.
Oh, good.
Right? It's government, you know. But thank you guys. I appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions on fire general before I move to Q and fire? Okay. So Q and fire starts at the bottom of the same page and then goes to the beginning of the next. Other services and charges, that's the 30%, or 30,000, excuse me, Q and fund automatic reimbursement there in 502 over a year. If you turn the page, I put just a placeholder in there of 50 grand. So you know, this year we purchased the new fly car, the sort of EMS truck, if you will, the, the Night Ranger truck, as I like to call it because of all the bells and whistles. Obviously, that was a little more expensive. That was, I think, about 65,000. But without the direct ask and knowing that really the priorities are the remounted ambulance or the pumper tanker, I put that in there just to move money into the budget. That gives us kind of like the initial thrust of what we might need. I know it doesn't solve either of those things, but it's kind of a placeholder for once we actually determine where we're going. So that's what that's in there for. So that brings the budgeted Q and expense to 80,000, which is about 15,000 less than what we budgeted this year. But again, the difference is we really were buying a 65,000 dollar truck last year. This, next year's a little more ambiguous. Any questions about Q? Okay. Next, moving to Parks and Recreation, the 1312 fund. So salaries and wages, 4,200. That reflects the 5% increase for both the township gardener and the maintenance worker. So we, we pull those directly out of the Parks and Recs fund now. Supplies. So again, this is largely gardening and door community center supplies. So towels, toilet paper, soap for the bathrooms, various, again, various supplies needed on the gardening side. In fact, if anybody's driven past the little Palmer frontage sign there at night, there are solar lights that actually light it up kind of nicely now. So it's a little more visual. Those are the kind of things that supply line goes to buy. Other services and charges. So this was up by two grand. So we pay utilities for the community center out of here and the fire well. We pay the mowing contract for the community center out of that. We pay, you know, the servicing of the fire extinguisher, all your regular annual contractual pieces. So that brings the total for the Parks and Recreation to 24,700 dollars. Any questions on Parks and Recreation?
We need maintenance on that siren down there. Did that come out of the park and rec?
That would come out of Lloyd. What makes you say we, and the only reason I asked is because I was there and they tested it and I could hear it just fine.
Yeah, but it might break.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that one's ironically, that's not even the oldest one we have. But yes, so those come out of Lloyd's fund though, because it's a public safety, so it's a commodity.
Okay.
But speaking of Lloyd, that's the very next fund. So depending on, but the budget form the state has calls this fund ninety-five oh one, our internal Tom's web calls it seven-seven-seven-seven, and call it whatever one you want. But again, it's the Lloyd fund, public safety. So line item three B are the streetlight programs. So this is how we pay for all the streetlights that we adopted a year and a half ago or a year ago. And we didn't get a small increase on that. Barb didn't, when we got that most recent utility bill, I think there was a nine, it went up at twenty-five dollars or something. I know their grandpa did it at old prices, so it's still not bad at all, but I did notice that that bill was a little bit larger.
Well, only half of it.
So we, not on ours, not on our form, because we didn't, so interestingly enough, there's like those four or five that weren't, those aren't on that account. So we, there are still like four streetlights down there that technically we don't pay for. The one right there by Lupe's house, the one, that's one down, one house west of the Hayes house, which is the house that's next to the community center now. And then there's the one down the street, sort of between the auto shop and Petro House. And there's one more somewhere. I think there's four. But those aren't actually ours, and those are the ones with the different rate. So now all of ours are at that old rate. But I just noticed, noted that there wasn't, so we don't, we don't ever use this whole four thousand, so there's more than enough in there still, so we don't have to change anything. But no, there's that. And then, to Tom's point, we have just the basic public safety line item, three A. I budgeted thirty thousand, part of that was because we spent a good amount out of there this year. We used part of Lloyd's fund for the roof fix. And I'm trying to keep about a hundred thousand dollars in that fund because I want to use that when the time comes to help pay for such a thing as like, help pay for a pumper tanker or remount of the ambulance. But to Tom's point, we can also pay for the replacement or maintenance on any of these storm sirens. And I want to say they are sixteen thousand dollars a piece, but when we serve, so they're not an inexpensive item. I believe they're the sixteen thousand piece. And again, that's an old price, that's a two thousand and twelve or ten price or something, so it's going to be one now.
So we're, we are still responsible.
Yeah, so we own them, Porter County runs them, as in all of the, whenever they get triggered to go, it's coming from the Porter County side, and then they're the ones who come out and test.
So even though, like the one down, down the road is on town property.
All of, all of ours are in, yeah, it doesn't matter, all of the four that Windfield Township owns, they're all run by Porter County.
Well, we, we own all four.
Yes, we own them, but we don't operate them.
Yeah. But we own them, not Tom's.
Correct.
So we've got the one here.
Yep. Well, no, there's two. There's the one here and there's one across the street over by the Public Works Building.
Oh, okay, I didn't know about that.
There's the one on the back, none of us did. And then there's the one on the backside of the Lakeside Four Seasons, and then there's the one down by the right.
Okay.
That's a good question though, because that was a whole little exercise that Kevin, Jason, and the other Jason and I ran down earlier this year because we were trying to figure it all out. Everybody's like, you think this, but nobody really knows. And luckily, the fire guys know some people in Porter County, and you're able to get a solid answer on that. But that was a little bit of an exercise back in like February, I think. Because that's when Jason was like, I didn't even know there was one over there, I've lived over here forever and never heard it. That's because it faces the other direction. Any questions on Lloyd before I move to the donation fund? Okay. So the donation fund is a whole more restricted fund, which means that we get donations for express purposes, mostly for the food pantry, and so largely that's what it has to be spent on, as you all know. We just budget it as other services and charges, three A, and we increased it to twelve grand, so we went up a thousand dollars over this year. I will tell you, we've done a very good job of maintaining our balance for the donation fund this year in the sense of our spent expenditures are much lower than they were last year. I think there's multiple reasons for that. Number one, we're getting a lot of more material from the food bank than we had then. Number two, we had a larger than normal donation during the holidays from the store, Strack and Ventil last year. So I mean, that got us through the first three or four months of this year without us having to release any of our funding at all. And then I think the other piece of it, and I got to give credit where credit's due, so this was a combination of me, Barb, and Becky, but figuring out when we had to buy certain things, where you actually went for what. Because each store has certain things that are better there than anyone else, but really figuring all of that out. So for instance, one of the big holes we kind of had early, the first couple of years of my term in the food pantry was like laundry detergent, soap detergent, we had the basic soaps, all the hygiene ones, but you know, there's additional laundry. And you know, Barb's the one who really recommended one to Dollar Tree for that because that is the most economical place to find those items. However, if you're looking for like the baking supplies, so like sugar, flour, oil, or the sizes we need and the bulk we need, you're actually going to have to go to Stracks. And then all these, you know, your canned goods and kind of your shelf box goods is usually, so, but I think in figuring that out, I think we've saved a lot of money too. Because it used to be, we just kind of bought and bought, we didn't shop. And now, a little more experienced and a little more savvy about where we buy and when, so that's also helped. Okay, so that's the budget estimate, and our overall budget for 2026, if approved, the unit total there at the bottom of the page, three, nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and one dollars. So we're still not over a million, but we're getting there. Any questions on this budget estimate for next year?
I had one thought, that we have zero for signs, but this sign out in front of the resale shop is inaccurate.
Yes.
Because it was done a long time ago. We talked about a new one at the cemetery, and we talked about a new one at where you are. So maybe we should put something in there, and maybe we could, you know, get ourselves to put that on our agenda. Because this is one thing that we say, oh, that needs to be done, but then there's other things that happen and need to be done.
So I'm right there with you. Where I did is I put, I actually put all three of those entries on the capital improvement plan. So I didn't put it in next year's budget, but I planned them and I'm just looking ahead. I put them on paper for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine one year, is what I did. So this capital improvement plan, you have to plan for at least three years, I went through twenty-three, so.
What about the sign at the community center?
That's what she said, the community center, the one at the cemetery.
I mean, that, that one's passed, it needs to be addressed.
Well, I was going to say, can you, even though you plan out for three years, can you do them all in the first year?
Yeah, so this doesn't, this is not necessarily legally binding, but this, the CIP, is not necessarily legally binding except for the fact that you have to do it. And so what we did with that is I, so for instance, if you, and we'll get to this in a second, we get to the capital improvement plan. You'll see that I put the cemetery on here, I put the cemetery on here, the fence for, therefore, it's therefore, I put it on there for twenty-seven. I really planned to do it next year, we talked about through the additional budget appropriation, but I wanted to lock the money down in the CIP so we don't lose it to that road funding.
Yeah, I get that, sure.
And so, yes, just because I put it in the CIP doesn't mean we can't do it. It just means if we do do it, we have to either do an additional budget appropriation next year, or we have to find other ways within the budget.
And a lot of these signs are older than they were painted on. There's things now that we can get that might not even be all that expensive.
Sure.
Everything's expensive, but you know, not as expensive as having somebody can't read a sign.
So yeah, so I actually put the signs on there as being capital improvement projects that will come out of the rainy day fund as really two purposes, one of making sure the signs were on our bucket list, and then two, protecting the fund. That's a good point. Anything else on that? Any other comments on the budget at all? Okay. Next, we'll go to the Form Two. So again, this is the estimate of miscellaneous revenue. This lists out all of the non-property tax revenue that the township anticipates receiving for next year. Again, broken out in order of the same funds as which we just did the budget estimate. So we don't anticipate putting any new money into rainy day unless at the end of this year, the board wants to move money, which may be something we can consider, because we can always move money from general into rainy day, but really the only way we can move money. For the general fund, let's see, we get the financial institution tax, the vehicle excise tax, the E T, C V E S, usually what they call it, commercial vehicle excise tax. And then the rental of property under the general fund is the rental of this building. So you'll see there, we anticipate getting additional thirty-two, almost thirty-three hundred dollars, or thirty-three thousand dollars in addition to the property tax throughout for next year. Township assistance, you can see there, it's got the financial institution tax and the vehicle aircraft excise tax. So those are just broken up with normal distribution. Same thing for fire, Q and fire, and the recreation fund. The only thing that's different about the recreation fund is it again has the rental of property. So you'll see there, that's where we estimate the amount of money we'll make through the rental of the community center, which we anticipate being about sixty. And this, we always, I always estimate low because you'd rather bring in more money than you estimate. So like, for instance, this year, we are already going to be above that number that's there. So I anticipate we'll be above this number for next year, but again, I'd rather estimate low and group the magnitude of that more than the other way around. And then you can see the weight estimate in there, fifty-five thousand, I think this year's was fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, so it's going to be somewhere in that vicinity next year. And then the donations, you can see again, that's just the average of the general while we're receiving donations in the usual year. We are spending overall our donations faster than we are making them, so one of the tasks that the office staff and I were going to work on is like a fundraising effort where we have all the list of all the people who have donated and passed to it. So I think about just sending out a letter, emphasizing the need, emphasizing the increase in use, and asking for whatever assistance they have to provide us with. Any thoughts on, or any comments, questions on the miscellaneous revenue? Okay. The final item in this part of the packet is the notice to taxpayers. So a couple of things. Number one, and this kind of goes in line with the next item under new business, we need to set the public hearing date and time as well as the adoption meeting date and time. I copied what we did last year in here. These aren't necessarily set dates that we have to do it, we can still change all of this stuff because nothing's been published. But if we wanted to do it on last year's schedule, this is how we would do it. Monday, September the eighth would be the public hearing date, which means we have to get it published in the newspaper by the twenty-ninth of this month. Here, I put six P M. because that's the same time we had it last year. Six-thirty, again, all of this is manageable at this point. The adoption meeting, I set for Monday, September twenty-ninth, because as we're going to discuss here in a minute, the, our regular meeting date in September would be the Monday before that, but we'll be down at the conference, the ITA annual conference, so we will need to move that date for ourselves anyway. And September is one of those months that has five Mondays, so we moved it to the fifth Monday of the month, it will be Monday, September twenty-ninth. And we did put six P M. on this one because our regular meeting would be at six-thirty, so we would do the adoption meeting first, and then the regular meeting immediately thereafter. But wanted to stop and get the board's feedback and put on those dates and times.
So we're meeting the eighth and the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Anywhere we could do?
Yes.
Say the name?
Okay. The only real catch on this is we have to have it, we have to have the public hearing before the adoption, and we have to publish this and these dates in the newspaper at least ten days prior to the public hearing. So anything other than that, you know what I mean?
Just in case it works, what about the one?
I checked the town's schedule, that works. What about you guys?
So Thursday? That would work better than Monday tonight for that week.
That's the Thursday before the fall festival. Right? Okay. And six, six-thirty, what time, what's what we think? Six-thirty, six-thirty? Okay, I can change that. And then what about the twenty-ninth, are we okay with the twenty-ninth at six? And then? Okay. All right, so. Car show. Oh, sorry. It's all right. Just going to be there to get it started. Okay, so then with those additions, so Thursday, September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty is the public hearing, and Monday, September twenty-ninth at six P M. is the adoption meeting. Could we get a motion approving those meeting dates as specified?
I hear a motion for September eleventh at six-thirty.
I'll make a motion to the meeting for September eleventh, six-thirty for the public hearing. And then on Monday, September twenty-ninth at six P M. for the adoption meeting.
I second.
Any other discussions? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Two dates and times?
Call tomorrow because we can't change those, they have to unlock it for us to change it.
Oh, okay. I, I was able to change this today. Like I was able to change the numbers on this, I'm just saying, we can try.
I've had this before and I had to call, we have to unlock it, so.
Okay, well, we'll check, I'm going to go with a throw? No, they should go.
No, not at all, it just has to be accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, we should, I mean, to Barb's point, if nothing else, our D L G F representative.
It's no big deal?
She can get it and change it for us if we had to too.
And you said the public hearing, you changed it to six-thirty.
Yes. Yeah, so, public hearings, Thursday.
Does it also have to be posted? I'm sorry, I, go ahead. Posted outside?
Yeah.
And that has to be it?
Right.
No, never.
Right, but yeah, so just to reiterate, public hearing, Thursday, September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty. Adoption meeting, Monday, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five at six, and then be followed by the regular meeting at six-thirty. Okay. So the only other thing I want to point out on this notice to taxpayers before we move on is you can see here, if you look at this, it's, you know, column one, column two, column three. Column three, maximum estimated funds to be raised. This is where I was talking about where we allocate which portion of your levy bills where. So your general fund, your township assistance, and your recreation all come from your civil levy, it all comes off of one pie, and then we, the township trustee and township board, you buy that up. So that's where I was talking about how the current tax levy, if you look at column five for general, is about forty-something thousand dollars greater than what we're doing for next year, right? It's not that our levy rate is going down, it's we're allocating more of that levy to township assistance and the parks and rec that we talked about earlier. So that's kind of a visual representation of what we're talking about. Couple other things I want to point out. Column two there is that budget estimate, so it's all those numbers we just ran through. If you compare that to column three, you can see what I'm talking about where I say we're either overfunding something with the intention of creating cash balances, or like in Township Fire and Q and Fire, you can see where we are very intentionally saving money, you know what I mean? Because we intend to make those larger purchases. So again, just, I think that's a good point of fiscal responsibility, showing that we're budgeting within our means and with intentions and how we use those savings. Any other questions on the notice to taxpayers or anything related to the budget? Okay. Thank you, folks, we will get that entered and submitted, and Barb and I will let you know if there are any hiccups or issues with that. Before we move on completely from the budget, we are going to turn to the capital improvement plan, which is the next item in your packet. It's this really small little graph that's stapled together or chart. A little hard to read because this is the format the state requires it in, and it's all color coded. But basically, what you need to understand from this is on this first page, even though it's literally all those little dashes and there's no numbers in there, every time you see that dollar sign with a little minus, that's just a zero. And that orange one, the third column over for total, that's where it would tell you how much money we would have to move into the road fund if we had to move money into the road fund. So what I'm telling you So what I'm telling you is with this draft I created, we don't have to move any money into the road fund. So we get to preserve all of our funds. Turn to the second page. This is where you get, so the way this works is there's a capital improvement plan sheet for all of our unrestricted funds. Our unrestricted funds are rainy day in general. Rest of them are considered restrictive. So by using what's called the four B, which is just one of the budgetary planning tools the state makes us do. It's part of kind of these forms that we just went through. You pull, there's a line in there, it's line eighteen for each fund and it's your estimated cash balances at the end of next year. Now remember, they anticipate you spending every dollar you budget. So these numbers are always different. But this is what the state's requiring us to base our cash balance off of because it's the only projection they have. So the way this works is you can see it's kind of hard to read. But if, if we spent everything in our budget this year and we spent everything in our budget next year, so thirty thousand dollars combined, we would only have ten thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars left in rainy day. So that's when you move it to, so then you go down on the next little chump there. It says adjustments to the ending cash balance. Adjustment A is committed to a township's capital improvement plan. That's this guy. And you can see there, it just so happens we were able to commit ten thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars to the capital improvement plan. Make as that of what you will. As you'll see for the rainy day fund and as I've already explained, my intention behind that are those signs. The one here, the one at the cemetery and the one down at the community center. If you look, there's, you know, B encumbered by contractor purchase order, C third party restrictions, D restricted by standard federal law, E restrictions by contractual obligations, otherwise not covered above. We don't have any of those, but since we've obligated every dollar that's in rainy day fund, that's why there's a zero in terms of where it says adjusted estimated cash balance. And then the calculated thirty percent transfer is also a zero because you can't transfer a thirty percent of zero. If you turn the next page, you have the sheet for the general fund. So again, assuming we spend everything in our budget this year and next year, we would have an estimated cash balance of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. Again, I would add anywhere to eighty to maybe a hundred thousand dollars to that because if we're saving fifty thousand dollars in each budget over a two-year period, that's another potential a hundred thousand. Um, but again, we were able to go through and commit literally every one of those dollars, one hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred forty-four to various capital improvement projects. We'll go over here on the very next page. Um, so you'll see that that sheet also comes to zero, which is how we get that big fat zero on the front page, which means we don't have to move any of our funding for that road fund. Now, as for the addition, specific projects anticipated in the capital improvement plan. And again, I know it's blue, I know it makes it very hard to read because it's black print on blue background, but this is the way their state plan is set up. So I just went in order of the funds, starting with rainy day. You set that initial column to the left, that's the year of the expense. The fund is the great, says select fund type of capital improvement is listed there. The specific descriptions, that's second to last column, and the anticipated costs is the final column. So you can see for rainy day fund in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-nine, I have anticipated doing at least one of those signs per year. So signed for the New York Community Center, signed for unincorporated Towne Leroy, signed for Winfield Government Complex. I did not have the cemetery sign on here, but that one we actually might be able to get differently. There's a state program that I found through the Department of Natural Resources where pay five hundred bucks and it's like a state historical sign, it's really nice, pretty stakeholders. So we might be able to do that one differently anyway. But through that process and really not knowing what kind of sign we're going to get yet or what it is, I just divided up the total that was in there and put it in there for each of them. I assume each one's probably going to be between fifteen hundred and maybe two grand anyway. So I don't think we're probably that far off in terms of the anticipation there. If you go down to that second batch there where it says select fund and all the ones that say general fund, there's one, two, three, four, five. You can see there's various projects here. So and starting in twenty twenty-seven, I have installation of the cemetery fence. Like I said, that might actually happen next year, just depending, I would hope it does. I put thirty thousand in there just as a placeholder. I honestly think it might be more than that, just depending on what we decide to get in terms of what type of fencing, aluminum, chain link, et cetera. The second item in calendar year twenty twenty-eight, acquisition of land. So we haven't talked about this as a group yet, but I think as many of you know, the township used to rent that green space in the very center of Palmer and there was a park there for a long time. They eventually tore that down. The, the owner of that land is in, is, would like to sell it. It's currently on a listing until October, but he doesn't believe it's going to sell. And once it comes off that listing, he can dramatically order of asking price on it. And I think at that point, they're, he's going to come to us to see if we might want it. I think that would be a good thing for the township to do. Historically, we have managed that land, even though we probably haven't in ten or fifteen years. I can't even remember when did you guys sell it?
I don't know, but it was something that we did when we should have.
Yeah, right? Um, but that idea, then the other reason I was thinking this is a good idea was the historical context. Number two, obviously just preservation of green spaces as this community continues to suburbanize. But it's also stoney around the states and Palmer are kind of the only parts of our communities that don't even have like a pocket park. And so even if you already have the basketball hoop there that completely needs tore down and refilled back up, but the point of it is the bare bones are there. And so I think if we acquire that land economically, that it could be something good that we can do and we can establish just another park there or a full with a park there because it is technically already listed as a park, but it's just that front of the triangle. So I put that on there as something, a way of preserving our funds and also as like a placeholder for something we might actually want to do. Uh, in twenty twenty-eight as well, I have site improvements on the basketball court court at Palmer Park. So kind of go along, purchase the land. And then in twenty twenty-nine, I've got site improvements, renovations to Leroy Community Center, windows, painting, drop ceiling tiles, et cetera, just doing a lot of the things we need to. And again, these are all placeholders. It's just because I listed it as twenty twenty-nine now doesn't mean they're going to come back and yell at us if we happen to do it next year or if we do it twenty twenty-seven or twenty-eight. It's just an attempt to show Department of Local Government Finance and State Board of Accounts what we intend to make these capital expenditures on. Um, the other one I put on there for twenty thirty then, and we probably have to do this one before then. But I'm sure you've noticed, so my predecessor had the parking lot in front and then immediate back redone while she was here. The far part of the back parking lot has not been touched and I can't even tell you how long. It is in desperate need of it. Um, and so I put repaving the back parking lot on there. It's probably going to cost more than what I have listed there. But until we have an actual quote, I'm, I feel comfortable with what I listed because it's a little bit less than what we, she spent on the last go around. But she paved more than we're going to have to pay. So until it comes time for us to get an actual meaningful quote, that, that seventy grand is just in there as a placeholder. Next, capital expenses from township fire, Hume with a fire and public safety, the Lloyd. So these are all going to go together and you're going to see why. And part of that is, as you know, whenever we give these big expenditures for the fire department, we've always kind of split up how we're paying for it so we don't ever drain any one of our accounts. And so that's what I did here. So for instance, you'll see, starting with township firing EMS in twenty-seven, acquisition or improvement on machinery, I put remount of current ambulance that might turn into purchase of new ambulance. But for right now, I wanted to put something on there. And as the remount is much more economic, economical for us at the time than the purchase of a new ambulance, I put that on there. But if you look down then to the Hume with a fire under year twenty twenty-seven, I put, you know, the remount there as well. So there's, you know, a hundred and forty from the general fund that year or fire general fund that year, a hundred from fire Hume and then forty from Lloyd because my understanding is the remount's going to cost about two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And so that's why I split up that way, obviously hoping we don't have to pay for all of that ourselves. But if we did, we, it's in there, you know? Similarly, if you go to the next item, the twenty twenty-nine input for township firing EMS, again, acquisition of equipment, purchase of a new pumper tanker, four hundred fifty thousand out of the fire general fund, three hundred fifty thousand out of the fire Hume fund and a hundred thousand dollars out of the Lloyd fund because I anticipate this costing just shy of a million dollars, nine fifty, nine eighty, because that's what we looked at before. The good news is on that is I ran the numbers somewhere. And, uh, I don't know where they went, but the point of the matter is, is that even with what we have on hand right now, we could pay for all of that from our, our gen, all the obligations under our general fund are fully fund, general fire fund are fully out fundable right now. Our, all the obligations on this page under the Hume fire fund, we are short currently. If we had to do it right now, we'd be short forty-seven thousand dollars. But my point is that doesn't even anticipate next year, you know, all the other years' fundings. And if you look at the Lloyd fund, I'm sorry, we're at forty thousand dollars short under Hume fire and you're forty-seven thousand dollars short under Lloyd. So again, that's not including any of that additional revenue, right? So I think that's a good thing. We're very close to being able to afford all of these things by ourselves, which is kind of crazy. And again, it's not the intention. I would love for that nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar pumper tanker to only have to pay for half of that. But when you're planning long-term like that, I don't think we can find that way. I think you have to plan for the whole apple and hope, you know, we bite half the apple and so forth, you know? Um, any questions on that page before we turn the page? Because I know that's a little bit of an exercise to kind of follow through. But this was how, by doing all of these things and listing them out, that's how truthfully we're not losing any money to that road funding bill, having to break the infrastructure and road fund. So the next page is a very confusing page and it's very hard to read. But as if having to put all the expenses in there wasn't enough, they want you to put anticipated revenues. This page makes no sense to me, the way they have it set up. But basically what they did is they took your historical cash balances, which is what, which is what it considers your, what your year-end cash balance estimates for next year. So that's that gray, those gray columns. And then when you get to that larger portion that says estimate of revenues reserved for capital improvements, you see it has the years twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight grouped and it has those four areas of funding for each year. And we're supposed to put how much new revenue from that year you are going to allocate specifically for capital improvements. I personally find this incredibly tedious and hard to do because we're, almost all of this is going to be a cash balance. And cash balance doesn't count as a new revenue. So I went through and made some additional pieces. So like, for instance, as you know, in this year's budget, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars in the Hume fund for miscellaneous vehicles, a capital asset. I rolled that forward each of those three years. Um, you know, in years where we had new property taxes for the general fund or the other revenue, which would be rent, you know, I put thirty grand in there for those years for various purposes, whether it was the cemetery or, you know, those different pieces. Um, and then if you look down for, so it was kind of funny, the way this worked out, obviously our biggest purchase is the pumper tanker and that falls in twenty-nine. So those didn't have to be broken out here because that probably would have been a little bit more of an in-depth piece. Um, but you can see I, I put fifty thousand dollars in the capital expenses for twenty twenty-seven, probably towards that ambulance that we were talking about. Um, and then from the Lloyd, so that fourth to fifth row down, um, I just put the portion of a local income tax, because that's what Lloyd is, local option income tax, that I thought we would estimate to use capital improvements. We don't act, not, nothing in this block side for what it is. It's all manipulatable every year. A really big important piece here is that now every unit of government, every township is going to have to improve a C I P annually by September thirtieth of every year. So we have to improve this by the end of this month. Um, any questions about the C I P? And if your comment is, we don't like it, I agree, but there's nothing I can do about it.
So what you're saying is we're not going to have any money for the road?
We are likely not going to have to put any money into the road fund, that is correct.
Okay.
That's good. Yeah. Um, okay. So the other thing we have to do is we have to, we have to publish, public, we have to publicize this like we would our public meeting notice for the budget. And then we have to adopt it. But unlike our budget, which has to be in two separate meetings, public hearing and adoption, you can have the public hearing and then immediately adopt it. So because we have to set the date, my thought is, and because this has to be done by September thirtieth or thirty, yeah, September thirtieth, is that we would do the public hearing for this at the same meeting we do the public hearing for the budget and just get them both done and then have. So in my mind, the way this would work is six thirty on the eleventh goes around, we start with the budget. We do our public hearing on the budget. Once there's no more public comments in the budget, we open the public hearing on the C I P because you can do them in the same meeting. The D L G F clarified that and said you don't have to have separate meetings for them, you just have to notice it. And then once we did the public hearing on that, we could literally turn around and the board could go to a group. Um, but is that amenable then to the board that we would do that on that September eleventh?
Fine with me.
Perfect.
Do we need a motion again?
Oh, if you want to, sure.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the, or to review and possibly approve the I C P um, on September eleventh at the other, at the budget meeting.
Yeah. Public.
Yeah.
Budget meeting.
Public, budget meeting. You want something on there?
I second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. We are done with the budget, congratulations. Well, no, we're not, just started, we're done with tonight's portion of the budget. Um, hopefully that wasn't too painful. Hopefully that stuff is starting to seem a little more sensible and routine. Uh, we've worked through this three times together. Um, okay, next. Consideration of a proposal for the restoration of Poison Park in partnership with Purdue University. So this is one of the things I'm most excited about, really since I've been, I've come into office. So as I think everybody in the room knows, I was introduced to a gentleman named Don Carlson. He runs the Department of Natural Resources. He's the head forester for Purdue University. He manages all of Purdue's lands across the state, including the Doakes property here on the south side of the township. Uh, I approached him with an idea of ecologically restoring Poison Park uh, to, with native shrubs and trees, and he was incredibly excited about that. He put together this base plan that you have in front of you. Uh, so the base objective is to restore three acres of moored grasslands, native woods, to create a natural area that enhances the features of the park. Natural features of the park provides quality wildlife habitat and educational opportunity for the community. The reasoning is that native tree species will compose the majority of the interior acreage, acreage well, while wildlife friendly native shrubs will surround the outer edges to enhance aesthetics and habitat. Funding source and agreements, Purdue Fish and National Resources or, yeah. Uh, Department of Land Staff will plant the trees and apply herbicide, so they're going to do that for us. Winfield Township will purchase the trees. We need to order them by October first from Bologna Estate Tree Nursery. Purdue will pick them up and transport them for us. And we'll need to purchase the herbicide. Purdue Forestry will specify the needs. And then the township has to agree to mow between the tree rows for three, three years, one through three, which we would largely already have to maintain that property at least a couple of times a year anyway. And as you see here somewhere, they need to be mowed twice a year anyway. So really that area would be mowed less than it is now, but that's, so my point is it's not going to be a cost increase to us. Um, total cost of the trees is approximately eight hundred dollars because they get to buy these things in bulk and they have a good price and herbicide would be about two hundred dollars a year. So all very doable, all money we have in the budget and we could always manage within the budget. Planting area, so again, we're going to plant a total area of three acres. Uh, the soils there are moderately properly drained, so they're going to specialize the seed species that are adapted for that. Uh, they're going to be planting red oaks, burr oaks, swamp white oaks, pin oaks and shumur oaks along with scattered nurse and edge species, including Norway spruce, bald cypress, white pine, hazelnut, silky dogwood and the gray dogwood. Uh, spacing, uh, so they'll be using a ten foot by six foot planting grid on all three sites. Uh, and this will account for about twenty-two hundred trees. Maintenance. Herbicide will be sprayed by Purdue forestry staff immediately following planting in spring of twenty twenty-six and before flood break in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. The planting site will be mowed by the township between the rows once in early June. And again, in September, three years, twenty-six to twenty-eight. Uh, underneath that there, you can see the list of the tree species that we would plant and the approximate numbers of trees. And then it just makes that note again at the bottom, that says shrub will be planted around the edges and some conifers will be randomly distributed among the taller trees. So before we go through and really the middle pages here, they're interesting, but they may not, they're a little specific. But what I like is the very last page of this and I got to give credit where credit's due again. This is where I got to give a lot of credit to our board member, Jason Jekas. I approached him, uh, in his professional life in the CAD drawing world and said, hey, can you help me design a mock-up of what this proposal could look like? And Jason, again, very graciously gave up some of his time to help us put this together. So as you can see there, you're looking at an aerial view of the township property. You can see there in the lower, uh, left-hand corner, the Township Community Building and Pavilion, Poison Park is that area. Poison Park is that area just across sort of that dry ditch bed, uh, to the east and north. You can see where, how we have, Jason has illustrated it so that it is all treed in. And then we have put a trail in there. Uh, the trail, as you see it here, definitely not specific, but the point of it is, it gives us options. It allows us to show people what it could look like. And then we go into plant, we can use this as a guide and see what they recommend and what we can ultimately get. But I really love that he put all of the different pieces in there because, you know, in my mind originally, it was sort of just a big loop. But the more actual trail mileage that you have in there, the more utility. Uh, a couple other key pieces is we talked about how this is going, could be used for educational opportunities. Um, Purdue would like to be able to use it as a Purdue Extension Site so they can bring their forestry students out there to do uh, studies, you know, help with land maintenance, do that kind of thing, get hands-on experience. And Jason has included pictures of what some of these trails look like other places. But if you look sort of towards the top right-hand corner, you see what looks like a trail that goes past a sign. This is one of the pieces that I think will be really cool because we do anticipate, we do anticipate that, uh, we would have some of these signs in different places to help show people what they're looking at, what species they are, why they're good for the environment. Um, make it educational, but also a physical, uh, area for dislectivity. Um, and again, because right now the township owns it and it's just a big field. And I don't know about you all, but one of the things, as I just already said, as our community continues to suburbanize and continues to be developed, I think the preservation and restoration of green spaces is only more important, which is more pronounced. So, I really like this plan. I think it's awesome to partner with a major in-state institution such as Purdue. Um, I think that Purdue is particularly excited about this program. They like these community partnership ideas. The only other thing they've asked for is kind of at the trail head, they want us to put up a sign that basically just says that this was done in partnership with Purdue Forest State. So the town put in, so you focus on the camera and folks, you can hear the beeping. The town put in a new security system and fire alarm system, and even though Barb and I watched them change the battery today, apparently the battery is going dead again. So they have some kind of an issue with that. We're going to have to deal with it. Um, they replaced it twice in two weeks to get one, three hours ago.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not, so it's going to keep doing that at whatever intervals. I apologize. Um, but that being said, this is the plan. I would like the board to consider this, and if they feel so inclined to make a motion to approve, moving forward with this plan. Um, but obviously I don't want to supersede your guys' role.
Yeah, it's a little special.
I have one question.
Okay.
My understanding was Poison Park was more poisonous. Was, Poison Park was on the west side of the community center, not the east side.
So I looked up the founding resolution and it just lists the surrounding, the plans surrounding the community center as Poison Park. The whole thing is Poison Park. It's all one contiguous land.
Okay. Because they have the sign that's over on the west side.
Correct. Right. But I mean, that's the stuff, the sign that's down here on our, like, lemon lakes on one side of it, but that doesn't mean the other side of it's down.
I mean, what's the issue? Well, the issue was that when we got the property on the west side, they, what they called it, Poison Park, because it was Poison's property. And that's, so that was his property, it was only on the west side of the community center. Uh, we've always owned the, this part here. We've always owned that. It's always just been the community center property.
So you're saying it should be a different name?
Uh, I don't think.
I think that gets confusing.
Is it all the same land?
Well, it is. We all, but it was, uh...
So it was done in three different purchases, three different transactions. But the way the resolution for Poison Park is written is that it's Poison Park is the land surrounding the Leroy Community Center.
So really, the community center is Poison Park.
Yeah, it's the Leroy Community. Technically, if we were being incredibly specific, Leroy Community Center.
At Poison Park.
I wouldn't see an issue with it personally because the land, when you come there now.
It's contiguous, it's all together.
Your heart can be in one spot, but you, so it would be a comfortable area.
And we can definitely revisit the resolution to make sure it's expressly written as that. But, you know, Barb, again, I give her credit. Barb went through and put together those books of all the resolutions. When I was looking at this, I went back and checked it, and it just specifies that it's all a contiguous land around the community center. So.
I mean, I just.
Yeah.
It was a little confusing to me because my understanding was it was only that property.
Well, okay, but what would you call it on the side then? You don't even like what the name would be. It's just a dead field, right?
No, it was considered as Leroy Community Center property.
Right, but we don't like rent that out when people rent it, right? It's sort of a different space.
That, that's.
So that's my point.
That, so if we do, so the community center, just the, the area and then the horseshoe pits and, and the playground.
Well, not even really the playground because technically when we rent out the pavilion, the community center, we can't stop people wanting to play now. We can't stop people who's brilliant, because that's rental. But like, if, but like, if somebody's having an event there and somebody from the non-street wants to bring their grandkids to the park, we're not kicking them off, or, I mean, we're not going to kick them off that.
So the people that rent don't have control of them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't see.
No, it's limited, it's limited to just that immediate area surrounded by them.
So now I, now I can understand why I call it Poison Park. It takes, it's not, it's, uh, yeah. I could, I don't know how to state it, but all right, I mean.
Yeah. And I, I personally wouldn't even call that as an expectation because, you know, like you said, certain things you expect if you're renting, you know you're renting a pavilion, or you know you're renting a building.
Yeah, right.
But usually at a playground or other amenities, most of the time.
I even think like Lakes of the Four Seasons, right? So this is gonna be a, like, super personal example, but when I graduated high school, my high school graduation party was at, uh, Best Beach, the single pavilion. It's like, we rented out the pavilion, but like, there is that volleyball area and I think there's a playground, like, the kids could have come up and used the playground. We was kicking them off, right? So, same concept.
Okay.
Okay. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Sherry?
Oh.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I just have a question.
Oh, I like the idea.
Is there enough room for 2,200 trees?
You do that because you're going to lose so many of them.
All right.
I mean, truthfully, out of, I, I'm sure he could provide us the stats on it, but like, he drove me through the Doakes' property. Depending on which planting was where, they lost, you know, half to 80% sometimes. It just depends. So.
Not going to be any trees planted on, planted on the west side. It's all, it's all going to be back here.
Correct, yeah. We're not going to do anything to the green space over here. Yeah. And I mean, not, nothing on this plant. My thought about the green space between the community center and Hayes Lake is at the west side of the property is that we have, so you see how Jason has that bridge trail that crosses over here on this map?
Yeah, yeah.
So my thought is eventually, in a perfect world, you would sort of have a, like a, a paved or whatever running trail that would kind of go from there, around, and do kind of a loop across the green space on the west side. And then come back up and kind of skirt that northern tree line and come back into the, you know, back into the thing that way. So it's one contiguous loop. People could go jog if they wanted to, you know what I mean? They don't have to worry about, "Am I on the trail? Am I off the trail?" What have you. Uh, but that's kind of my only thought there. Because I like, another reason I want to keep that green space open and we don't have anybody doing it right now. But two years ago, Lakes of the Four Seasons had too many teams for their in-house soccer league. They didn't have enough training fields, and so they would use that. And I just, I want to leave it open for things like that, right? I don't want to just close it all. So. Right. Um, any other questions, Jason or Sherry or?
I think it's a great idea.
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Yeah. The way I laid this out, sort of, you know, you showed that what is, you know, what's what. Uh, obviously there's the trails in there and those are all pretty self-explanatory, kind of what forestry area would eventually look like. Um, but the one picture up in the upper left corner, um, you can kind of see it, it looks pretty much a white PVC pipe sticking out.
Oh, yeah.
That is actually right from Purdue's, uh, website, and that's kind of the start of it.
Yes.
And so I thought that was kind of important, trying to show the, the change and the transition of this.
So they do that when they're protecting species. That won't be particularly.
Right. So the deer don't eat the winner.
And you gotta remember, like, the reason we're planting the hazelnuts is it's anticipated to be a crop tree.
A crop tree, yeah.
So you don't, you want them to grow and not get eaten.
My son has them in his yard. We've got black walrus.
Yeah, and I know we kind of talked real quick about the layout of, of the trail and obviously there's no rock and stone, but my thought exactly was behind that, it gave you a couple of different loops that allowed, um, you know, some more walkability and then in different areas. So obviously none of that's in stone, but there was an idea behind that.
I think that's great, Jason. Great.
And again, I really appreciate it. Jason, he did this far as kind of on the last minute.
Yeah, really. I love the township logo at the time.
Hey, I wish I had, uh, could have had more time because I would have made it look a lot nicer. And I had to pull that off of our YouTube channel.
There you go. There's good news for YouTube channel already. Um, excellent. All right. So if there are no other questions or comments or discussions, sir, I'm going to pass it back to you for consideration.
I have a motion for, uh, to partner with Purdue on, on the trees, uh, Leroy, uh, Poison Park.
I'll make a motion to partner with Purdue on the Leroy, uh, Poison Park, uh, project.
I second it.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. All right. Well, I will send that good news back to them. If there is any paperwork I need to sign, I will sign it and bring it to the next meeting so you all can see it. Uh, but we will go ahead and get that going. Next, uh, we've already kind of done this, but we do need, I suppose, I already talked about it. As you know, the fourth Monday of the month in September is when the ITA annual convention is. So Barb, Becky and I will be in Indianapolis at that point in time. We have already talked about moving the date to the 29th. We have officially put the adoption meeting for the budget on the 29th. However, we probably do need a motion to officially move the regular meeting date from September the 22nd to that 29th.
I'll make a motion to Purdue, sorry, you said, 29th.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Perfect.
Both of these, any time you need. Or it's just staying the same?
It'll be just on the same thing, so, yeah. When Sherry comes back, I'll ask her to vote and we'll call it unanimous. Um, thank you, folks. I appreciate that. Just so that way it's all tied up nicely. When she gets back, we'll go through my update real fast and then we'll hand over the fire badge and hopefully you can get out of the area in the next 30 minutes. Um. Uh, what battery? I know, right? Well, so the thing is, I tried and it keeps going. No, you can't. I tried. That's why I had to go get them to have them replace it. And of course, it's not like just a regular battery. It's some kind of special battery. Um.
Hope we brought that back.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll wait for Sherry, or we'll, we'll come back to Sherry on that. We'll go ahead into the update from the trustee, um, so we can come back to her. So, you have two sets of reports on township assistance and food pantry. As you might remember, there was an issue last month with the, we thought there was an issue with the initial report, but it looks the exact same.
No, the issue was with this, the detail.
Okay, yeah. So the issue was with the detail. Can you remind them what the actual issue was?
There were items missing, and I reran it with the same dates and the additional information is there.
So Tom's web can be kind of corny. We, we, I've done it before too, where you run the same report twice and you get two different versions of it. So what Becky's referring to here is the detail report, so the one where it has the case numbers and you can see what everything it is. The actual report, which is the one on top dated 7/28, that was accurate. So those numbers there for last month of 20 initial applications, three new, 10 continuing, one new. Those were accurate, just not everything was populating on this.
Yeah, not, not everything was missing.
Yeah. So, uh, hi, Sherry. So one quick thing. We voted, or we made a, Jason made a motion, Tom seconded, to officially move the regular meeting for September from the 26th to the 29th. I know we moved the adoption meeting, but we didn't move that yet. So it'll just be your turn to vote.
Oh, that's fine. I agree. Aye.
Aye, okay. So that makes the vote unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. We moved into new business, uh, or we're, or we moved into the update from the township trustee. So, uh, as we were stating, there was an issue in last month's report. If you might remember, there was some confusion about the veracity of it, and we were going to bring it back to you to show you what was, what we found. So this report, the graph here of the numbers, that was accurate. What wasn't accurate was the detail report from last month because for whatever reason, there was entries missing. Um, it was a clerical error. We're not really sure why the system didn't pick out the right, right? Yeah, yeah. Why the system didn't pick out the right numbers. Um, but like we were saying, Tom's web is kind of corny sometimes. So, um, but we, this is the corrected, so you can see what it was for last month. So if you keep the records, you can get that top one in there with last month, so that's accurate. Uh, if you turn the page, again, you'll see where it says detail assistance report from 7/1 to 7/31. That's the latest numbers. And if you look at this report right here, that says trustee update 8/25, it's the very last page in there. That's the last update, so this is everything through July. So as you remember, starting this year, we just do it through the end of the month so that we don't have to break things in half like we were before. So, for the month of July, we had, through the month of July rather, we had a total number of initial applications of 22, so that's, there have been at least 22 families that have filed for township assistance with us at least one time this year. Two of them were new in the month of July. We've had a total of 15 continuing applications on the year, so that means at least 15 families have filed at least twice with us, some of them maybe more. Five were the, five of those were new in the month of July. Uh, total number of approved, like, that's outright completely approved were 11. Total partially approved is 24, and the total denied, completely denied would be two. If you go back to this guy, so go two pages back. This is the detail assistance report from 7/1 to 7/31. Those are what the actual assistance that we were just referring to were. Um, so you can see, we paid a large water bill there. Um, somebody who was many, many months back, and we covered it so that it would not be disconnected. Um, you'll see, again, uh, there's a family who, the main, the, the main breadwinner, lost his job. And so we've helped them now a couple of months in a row. That's that next big block there. Um. Becky, is there, is there anything else you would point out on this one? Uh, I guess what I would point out, uh, so there, at the bottom, 2023-1, 7/15. We did end up having to reverse a prior, a previously granted request for township assistance. So case number 2023-1, the very first person I ever helped with township assistance. Uh, they came in, the individual asked for assistance with a variety of bills, as you can see there, one of them is housing. We initially agreed to pay half because this is the mortgage on her condo unit, and so it's actually both sides. We can only cover the domiciles that she lives in. However, that check was returned to us because their mortgage company does not accept partial payments. If you're going to do a partial payment, both checks had to come at the same time. And then that individual kind of went MIA and was not responsive to phone calls or emails over the period of about a month. And so after several warnings, I rescinded that out of their assistance, so we took it back. It was not a pleasant situation. Obviously, we just voided the check. Um, but it was unfortunately necessary. So that's where you see that housing, 1347 and zero. That, you would have seen that on a previous one with half of that being awarded and we. But Becky, is there anything else on this we could point out on the township assistance side? We are getting a lot of township assistance requests. We had kind of had, we had kind of had it slowing for a little bit there, and really like the last month, it's really coming full force.
Everything's gone up.
Yes.
Mortgage payments and shares.
Yep.
It's unbelievable.
Even today, so yes, so at the end of that, I think last week we had three or four come in and today we have eight. I mean, that's a lot for us, just a couple of days of operations, so.
Are there, uh, town residents or, or?
Mix of everywhere. Um, honestly, right now, a lot of town residents.
Yeah.
Um, and there are still some everywhere, but right now, so what we have noticed is there have been an influx of new residents into sort of the east-west, excuse me, side of the town. Um, and there are still some everywhere, but right now, so what we have noticed is there have been an influx of new residents into sort of the east, west, excuse me, side of the town. And so over there, this side, over there. And we are noticing, I think, four of the last five applicants have all been new residents who have moved in within the last anywhere between three and six months who cannot afford their rent. And it really, it really begs the question of, is the landlord verifying and some of the other same. So it does raise some concerns. Um, you don't see any of these reflected here yet because that would be on the report we give you next month. Um, but you'll see there's been a variety of actions taken. Some of them approved, some of them not, and all for very different reasons. Um, so we've been kind of dealing with that as it comes, but there really has been quite an uptick in just the last four weeks, I'd say.
Yeah. And, yeah, and not just that, but one thing that really bothers me is when people call NIPSCO and complain about their high bill, they tell them to call the trustee's office and get help with it.
Which on one hand is good and one hand is bad, right? I think it's good because I think if people really need the help, I'm glad to share it. But to Becky's point.
Well, I should, but but for NIPSCO to refer them to us either way.
Yeah.
I, that just really bothers me.
Correct. And so it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a difficult situation in the midst of the fact that we have had tons coming recently. I mean, it's been very busy. Uh, Barb made the comment today that she feels like there are more people coming in on a daily basis for township assistance than there are food pantry right now. I'm not saying something because usually if people walk through the door, they're looking for the town or they're looking for the food pantry. So.
Well, in the one house I looked up today of the, they moved in June first and they're renting, but the Zillow or whatever, I looked up, this house is like over four hundred thousand dollars. And if these, the people aren't the landlord, if they're not.
Now, how are they qualifying?
Yes. How, is he looking at their, um, financial reports? The one isn't working. She's, yeah, yeah, that's something medical. And I don't know about the other one, but it's just like, what is the landlord doing? To qualify these people?
Right. Just grabbing them in.
And then you get them in there and they paid June's rent and July's rent. They pay August or August is what they went up with. You know, you've only lived there two, and it's thirty-three hundred dollars a month.
Oh, my God.
Between thirty, between thirty, so there are three of them specifically that are all right over here. And their monthly rent is anywhere between thirty-two and thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Right.
And this is a, every bedroom.
A couple of them are the same landlord.
Yeah.
That's not right.
It's two and two, I think. It's two that are the same and two that are.
I just don't know what that landlord is doing to qualify those people.
Did we check? Did we look him up to see if maybe we paid him before?
We paid one of them before, yeah.
He's just using.
Or the landlord, it's all.
The landlord? What she said, Jay?
I was just wondering, maybe like was Becky saying, but what if we paid the landlord? Like.
The whole income.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, where.
I know we have one of them.
Sheri, Becky pays to do this.
So we're looking, I mean, the other thing too, I remember is with their rents that high, we obviously can't pay the whole thing anyway.
Right.
So it, it's hard for me to say, yeah, he's clearly doing their, they, because I don't know if he or she, but they're clearly doing this for the money because what money are they really getting? But something's, and it's all of a sudden. I mean, this has really just been the last four or five weeks.
And is the landlord telling them, oh, you can't pay this call down.
Right, right.
Or, and not that they're not entitled, they live here, if they qualify according to our standards, our guidelines, you know, and Cody makes good decisions on those, but it just doesn't seem like.
We're supposed to be a safety unit, not a, um, catch-all.
Hand up, hand up, not a handout.
Yes.
You know, no, but yours is right too. I'm just saying this.
Yeah, and they're coming in within ninety days of moving in.
So we are also, so there's in the township assistance, there is a clause that says denial based on intention to move into township for the purposes of receiving assistance. Many townships use that as saying there's like a ninety day window that we won't touch. Um, in some of these instances. Right. And so, but in some of these instances, we haven't forced that and it's just because of everything we're talking about.
Right.
Um, and usually I will also say, there's usually, if we are being difficult or if we are putting up kind of roadblocks or even when we deny, it's usually because there's something else in the case file that portion will be, there's, there's some kind of issue and you can't near. Um, and some of these are weird. Like some of these are things where it's just like, I don't really even know what to make of it a couple of years, you know? So you're just hesitant and you're fearful because of that because you realize not my dollar, it's not Barb's dollar, public dollar and you gotta be responsible for it.
Somebody can move in and expect to pay thirty-three hundred dollars.
Right.
A month and then not pay.
My favorite one is there is an individual, there's an individual who has not worked since twenty twenty-three. And this person moved into a new home that she rents in like June, like you said, June, July, same person?
Not, not, not her.
Okay.
The one, that was the one of, yes.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
The other one hasn't worked, yeah.
Hasn't worked. And it's like, how would you, how do you expect?
She said her mom's paying the, but how, how, and I said to Cody, okay, her mom's been paying her rent. But what about car insurance, house insurance, car payment, groceries, water bill, gas, electricity? I mean, just those things, is her mom paying everything? She's a grown woman.
Yeah. And then they claim they have no bank account.
She says she has no bank.
They have no bank.
Doesn't the landlord see this? Doesn't that show a red flag? Why is he renting to her?
Agreed.
Why is he renting to her? He needs to be investigated.
We have very limited authority when it comes to that, but yes, we agree.
That is, that, it's like raping people. Awful. Something's wrong there.
Sorry, next one.
A girl, let me just say this real fast. A girl called, came in today and Cody called her, uh, one of our success stories. And she's been difficult on and off and not always communicating too like she's supposed to be. And she has been looking for jobs. She has worked, uh, like the last eight months, but now she's not there anymore. And now she's looking for something in her field, which is social work. She got hired and it's a contract. Um, therapist, thank you, I believe, which is, and she was grinning from ear to ear. And I said, I'm so happy to see you so happy, you know, and she, and she has another job that the, the business is, comes out of Indianapolis, but it's up here. And then she's going to keep looking because she wants something full-time. And she's had a hard couple of years.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, power turned off, water turned, I mean, you name it. She's had it. But she's really like trying to get a car now. Her dad's going to help her. She's lost her kids. Her parents have kids and everything. And, you know, like she's really had, so she was what Cody called her a success story because she, she, you know, as, as hard as he has to be on them sometimes, maybe it got her to, to actually
Motivate.
Do what she needed to do. For whatever reason, she was her almost enemy, but she's picked herself up by her bootstraps and that's great. And she's.
First story that you want to hear.
Right, right.
And to be honest with you, as Barb's kind of indicating, not somebody I would have pointed out necessarily last year at this time and said that's a successful.
Yeah, that she's going to be.
She's, she's gone through various stages and.
I think too, I think her neighbor may have an influential.
I, yes, she has another, her neighbor is another township assistance resident and they kind of mutually support one another a little bit. I think Becky's right. I think that her individual is probably good.
And she was with a different person today that, you know, I had a good conversation and he seems like he's now got his head and his shoulders straightened, straight. So maybe he's helping her, you know, as he's having to.
All right.
Most of the which.
Yep. Okay. Next, building maintenance, everybody's favorite subject. So on top, this is the final invoice from mold remediation from upstairs that was done by Surf Pro. Looks like this. Oh, sorry. That wasn't out in order. My apologies. I was doing it and, okay. Um, so, yeah, so this is a Surf Pro. This is going to insurance. Um, we'll obviously have to pay up to twenty-five hundred dollars on our insurance, which is our deductible, but given that they're, you'll see it in here. Um, they had to tear out the cabinets and part of the trim and some other things. When we get that in, that's all going to be rolled up for and we'll pay up for like, so twenty-five hundred and then insurance will probably have the rest of it. Um, but you can at least see what that was. The next one is, this is the from Rhodes Plumbing. This is the invoice from the initial leak that when it was coming through the stands over here. This is how we found out there would be mold and we need to have it remediated. Uh, the behind that is while the mold was being remediated, they turned off the water upstairs and it caused a secondary leak because there was water valves that once there was no pressure being on it, there became a leak. Although ironically, when the pressure was on and the water was on, there was no issue. So we turned the water back on and had the plumber come out the next day and replace those four valves as you see there for the price listed there. Um, so all of that to say is now at this point, we're waiting on an invoice from Hen and Sons for the cabinetry replacement installation. I thought I would have that today. He called me earlier, so I'm anticipating that I'll have it by tomorrow. Um, when we get it, we'll send that to the insurance company as well, um, so that, and we'll go ahead and pay for it and then the insurance will probably just reimburse. So we will take care of all of that, but it's been a long run because if you all remember, this all started like five days after the roof. So it's been an ordeal. I know our men and women at Fire Force are ready to get back up in the station. I'm ready for them to be up there too. I missed them. Um, but believe me when I say these maintenance issues have been just so pleasant. Um, but that brings us to the next one. So uh, underneath all of that, you will have an invoice from Higgins overhead door. So two of the doors, door number two south and door number one south, uh, had issues. Uh, as you've seen, a door number two, they had to replace a bad belt and they lubricated the door. Door one, uh, sort of south and north, excuse me, they did a temporary fix on the light duty ops. There are not parts available for the door though. So it's not really the door. It's the opener. That is my understanding that they're actually broken. But again, it's so old that there are no more replacement parts or it's almost impossible to get them. And Jason, you probably remember this from when you were chief. I know Tom and Sheri, you probably remember this even from just before I was joined, but I remember in this, I say this not to cast blame on anyone. This has been a longstanding issue, right? And where I'm going with this is I remember attending a township board meeting as a, as a resident and not being up here and having the fire department explain that these doors are kind of on their last legs and that was in twenty twenty-two. So I kind of think that day's come. So obviously this is just the invoice for the work done. Uh, when we get to the fire department section, which is next, we will, in one second here, one piece later, uh, we'll, we'll talk about the quote for the actual replacement of those two doors, but know that those are, those are there, um, and we're handling them as they come. The other thing I'll need, I did, did want to mention, because I'd be remiss if we didn't, is we will need to purchase a new dishwasher for upstairs. Um, because of the age of the dishwasher that caused the leak, insurance isn't going to cover that. That's fine. Um, but that will be one additional thing that we'll have to buy for upstairs to finish off this project. And Hen and Sons put the installation of said dishwasher into their quote. So that'll be a part of the quote on that. Um, any questions on building maintenance? Okay. Next, we are going to do financial reports. So uh, we're going to do the dispersment report first. Looks like it says claims and dispersments up in the left-hand corner. So these would be all of the dispersments, uh, from the date of the last meeting to today. Uh, I'm trying to look through here and see what's going to be there. Let's see, oh. Honestly, all of this is pretty regular. Um. As you can see, we paid a lot of township assistance. We've had a lot of rentals. You see the parks and rec, that's us obviously returning security deposits.
On the second page.
Yeah, go ahead.
The second thing, that's where we bought food from the food, the food bank offers food for us to buy. And sometimes I, it's not that great, but this time we got ground beef and.
And, and at a very good rate. So we got, there were ten pound cases. They're one pound, the one pound like pre-wrapped chubs uh, of ground beef, uh, ten pounds of that was twenty-four ninety-nine. So we got twenty cases, so two hundred pounds.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that was a big expenditure. Uh, thank you Barb for that. And then, oh, okay. So if you look towards the bottom of the second page, it'll be transaction number one three four nine four and transaction number one three five one seven. You see how that is just a company name, that LLC that's listed there? I'm intentionally not saying the name out loud. But you see what I'm talking about there? It's a couple of letters and then an LLC after it.
Yeah.
Okay. That's one of those landlords that we're just talking about. So as, and I sell that to you not for any other reason, just for your own edification. So as we're reading these, you can start to recognize certain things like maybe we would too. So just keep that in mind.
Okay.
Does that make sense though? Barb was, anything else? That was a good call. So anything else on this one you would point out?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on dispersments before we go to receipts? Okay. Next is receipts. So again, looks for the one that says receipt report. Uh, you can see there, we got a twenty-five dollar donation to the food pantry. We got a, we received payments for the community center, various, various measures.
And the last one.
And then the last one, you see there, we also got a rather substantial donation there for five hundred dollars from a resident here in the area. She made a similar donation last year. Uh, we're incredibly grateful. Without people like her, we couldn't do it. Yeah. Any questions on the receipts? Okay. Uh, next, the funds ledger. So this is just the cash balance report. This is just everything we have on hand. It's like this. Just a single page by itself. Um, so you can see there, we did, the Township Roads Fund has been handed.
Oh, you did that, Barb?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we, at the end of next year, we will have to actually create the fund, but that's good that that's there. And as you can see, we don't have any money in it. But that's what that zero five zero zero five zero is. That would be the Township Road Fund. You can see our written rainy day to fund total, which is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and one dollars. You see the Township General, which is currently two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Donations fund is forty-one thousand, five hundred. Township Assistance, which is our weakest financially, financial fund is sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Firefighting and EMS is five hundred and four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Team Fire, three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Parks and Rec is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and Lake has one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy. And we will receive additional funds and before the end of the year in Township General, Township Assistance, Firefighting EMS, Team Fire, Team Parks.
I cannot tell. I, I don't think I would do that. There was.
Maybe they added it for us.
Yeah.
Either way, I'm glad that they're, uh, any questions on the cash balances? So you see though, how that's going to be different, right? So you see like how this cash balance is going to be very different than say the rainy day or the general fund cash balance. They make us budget off of, because it's not going to be the same because they can't anticipate, well, you're only going to spend this much, you can only budget it. So just, that's why these are helpful to me and I'm hoping they're helpful to you is because you can really see in real time where it's at, kind of make an adjustment on that projection. Any questions on financials before I turn it over? Okay. Hearing none. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience. Uh, whichever one of you would like to give the fire department presentation, please come up to the podium. All right. We welcome Assistant Chief Morris to the podium.
All right. Not too much to report today, so bear with me here. Um, you know, we've increased our staffing for the day shift and night shift, which has helped reduce our mutual aid needs by over half. It's pretty awesome. Still getting hit with three or four calls in a row, so we do rely on our agencies from time to time, but that number has since gone down even more than before. Uh, June total calls for service, one hundred and fifty-six, thirty-nine within township. Um, as far as equipment goes, all of our trucks have completed their annual maintenance. Uh, the new thirty-five fifty, the twenty-five hundred Silverado is in service and it's been, uh, used, uh, by our paramedics and whoever else needs it.
So the guy with the sack, that's the issue with the back.
Yeah, the drawer, the slider, yeah. Yep, right. Um, so yeah, it's a great addition to the fleet. So thank you very much. Uh, the portable radio brand is still panning through FEMA with everything going on in the administration. We're not sure what's going to happen, but we're hoping for good news. But at this point, no news is good news as well. Um, as far as training goes, uh, we have two new members enrolled for the canary that start in July, expected to graduate December. We renewed our certification for car seat inspection sites at both locations. So anyone who requests free service, get it through our website, mossfire.com, submit the request under the car seat, uh, query. Uh, conducting joint train with mutual aid partners this month and next month at different locations. Just trying to keep the collaboration going with our, uh, friends in all directions. Uh, CPR classes are available upon request. Uh, we do ask for a minimum of six people to put on the class just to resources and everything at, uh, at bay. Uh, fundraising, uh, golf outing next year, July tenth, twenty twenty-six. So put that in your calendar. If you just want to go play around the golf, see you out there. Uh, thank you to everyone who helped make the, the possible. Uh, we'll also be at the Winfield Harvest Fest on September thirteenth, uh, with the tent. I will also be at Winfield Harvest Fest on September thirteenth with the tent for the day. Got plans to be out there with different activities and recruitment, giveaways, you know, all that fun, fun stuff. Open house at our station, one or thirty-five hundred, October fifth, that's a Saturday from noon to four. Then actually went really well last year, hope for the same this year. Various activities, food vendors, air food trucks and stuff like that playing again. And if everything works out, I know we've struck out like the last five times, but a helicopter. Kids like the helicopter, it's pretty cool. But Saturday, October fifth. So depending on who's available, if they're available and obviously not needed for emergency transport. Stop, drop, donate, Saturday, December sixth, looking at nine AM to thirty PM. So I'm sure we coordinate dropping the appropriate food off here when the time gets closer. And as far as meetings go, obviously, the, the board and the command staff is just looking forward to getting together with you, Cody, and your team for a multi-year contract for twenty-six, excuse me, and beyond in the upcoming month. Or sooner, whatever it takes, so. That's all I really have for this report. Is there any questions, comments, concerns?
Are you guys going to do the, your dinner, the dance and dinner?
Oh, that'll be next year, that's twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, okay.
Well, you did July tenth with all five.
Well, we had to secure that, that's.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so it's, it's in the works, but it'll probably be April, March, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that's twenty-five there.
Yep.
And there was talk of focusing more on the golf outing next year.
Yeah.
Too, so.
Okay.
They were assured last time I talked to them.
Yep, no, pretty working through that.
They talked about a few different things for the golf outing and that, because it did very well.
Very well.
That's why I heard.
Yep.
And the other thing I was going to bring up is, two weeks ago, two weekends ago, I was talking to you guys the other day at the station and I used to hear like nineteen calls from Saturday.
Oh, yes, yes, I was on duty, actually. And my, Steve McConley here, yes, Mr. Magic Fendowski. Yeah, so he started at seven, I came in at eight. And in that twenty-four hour period, there was thirteen calls then and then he carried over for thirty-six hours to make nineteen. And I believe we handled all those ourselves, right?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Nineteen calls between one and one, sorry.
Uh, seven. Seven AM to seven AM?
Yeah.
Or seven PM, sorry.
No, no, it was seven AM to seven AM.
Okay.
Seven AM, Sunday.
No, Saturday morning and seven AM.
That's fire.
To basically Sunday, seven PM is twenty-one calls.
Thirty-six, thirty-six hours, yeah.
So is that a combination between fire?
Yes.
So this one was actually more fire related, I mean, not actual structure fires, but I need to get the fire truck out the door before we get the ambulance. And with having the four people on duty, we split it up to where we took the engine, kept the ambulance crew back, and if we needed them, we called them, so.
And in that time period.
Basically, yeah.
Oh my gosh.
In that time period, we had at least three times where we had three calls, something was going on.
Yeah, during the storm.
Yeah.
Wow.
Wow, that's perfect.
And I thought that was important to bring up because of the volume, sure volume, but you know, when we look at our overall call numbers from the fire department, we always talk about yearly number and that, and you divide that out, all four calls to five calls a day doesn't sound that much. They don't come in once a day, you know, or an uneven schedule and that.
It's no secret, we're not Chicago, we're not Boston, we're not any of that, but we do get those days where we get, you know, we get hit hard and it's, it's tough.
Absolutely.
Especially with the volunteers.
Yeah.
Right, because one of the most helpful things for me, this was something that Kevin said once, our chief of paramo, but, I remember, but when he was like, no, basically think of us as an ambulance company that has fire trucks because of the bulk of the call. But in the same sense, it is because I'm here, I hear it. Even if you guys are stationed here, I still hear the calls when I'm here, right? So, but no, Jason, I agree with you and other Jason, thank you for bringing this, giving us the stats, but I do think that's important because I think that's the story of why we've tried to do all the things we've tried to do in the last two, three years.
And, and, and no, no discredit to our group of volunteers, but I mean, he, he and I pretty much handled most of those ourselves.
Right.
Right, and that's for whatever reason, they, they showed up when they could, but it goes back to what we've been fighting for the last few years.
What you have a volunteer staff or a part-time staff running here in the whims of their full-time jobs and their life.
And for anybody that may be listening online and per just general knowledge, you know, you have, like you said, the livelihood of whatever they're doing that day, their plan, they dropped it once to come run for a fall. Had they dropped it, you know, maybe twice in the day. Everybody started getting to that volume, yours the whole day is rearranged.
Yeah, yep.
It was nice to see all the equipment down on Leroy last week.
Yeah, I saw, I saw him going to town.
Yeah.
They have a park right down the street from you.
They got there on my side.
Yeah, I walked over there. Looked at all the trucks.
Yeah.
One other thing I would just add and thank you for bringing it up is obviously we do look forward to, I mean, with the fire chief and Gary and the rest of the leadership to, you know, negotiate the fire and EMS contract for next year. And unlike this year, which was a one-year contract, I do think we're going to try and do a two-year. So while in general, you're not really supposed to do contrast, contracts that exceed your term limits, there are certain pieces that are allowable, one of them would be rentals for like for a building, those can be up to ten years at a time. Fire contracts, they, they don't have an upper legal limit, but SBOA says we don't like any more than six. I found it very helpful that when my first year in office, I didn't have to negotiate a fire contract because my friend was so scared, actually that was like a two and a half year contract, it was weird terms. But my point being that for that first year, there was a contract in place and I didn't have to worry and have that added pressure as I was trying to figure out the job. So, you know, I'm not going anywhere, so don't misunderstand by what I'm about to say with, by saying that, but I think it would be nice if whoever came next had that same ability of having that breathing room. So my way of sharing with the board that we are anticipating a two-year contract, just to kind of provide that level of comfort through the election, basically. All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Great job.
Yeah.
We hope you have some rest since that.
Right.
This is only Monday.
I hope that doesn't happen.
Two more items and then we are done. So under the fire reports, you have an email that's stapled to a quote in front of you. So this, this is the email from the chief explaining what's really wrong with the two fire bay doors, as I explained to you already, it's really the opener, not the door itself. So this quote, if you turn the page, is actually for two openers, two, two industrial duty trolley operators for those doors that'd be door one and door two, and bay door two and bay door one. And you can see the cost there for the two would be a total of three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. So when I look at that, I see that there is still, I think, sixty-four hundred dollars sitting in the Keem Fund and reimbursable dollars for them, or we can take it out, avoid. My point in saying both of those options is that we have options. So I believe we could even take it out of that fifteen thousand dollar other category I have in this fire general. So my way of saying, I think the board, my, my recommendation would that be that the board approve these invoices and we just get the doors fixed, because it's been a long time.
I'll make the motion to approve the invoices and fix these doors.
On second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? As you may, please.
Excellent, so that's it, drift.
I was just going to add to it, I know the history of those doors and.
Sure.
I probably should forewarn everybody, this probably isn't the last one.
Oh, no, we anticipate they're all going on, just like the wall packs, which are the lights on the outside above the doors, we'd have to replace every single one this year because they all started going out one by one. So I think you're right, it's, it's a third of your building, all of the pieces are starting to antiquate.
You can't wait for them to open and close.
Exactly, right, exactly. Okay, so that's the end of the fire portion. The announcements on here were in traffic, I carried them over from last month, but a couple of things. Number one, um, right, right. The only thing I was going to add is Fall Harvest Festival, because it's going to be in the parks on here, but really I should say Fall Harvest Festival. Saturday, September thirteenth, Township does have a booth. I would like to thank the towns of Winfield, they gave us a free booth at no cost this year, so that was very, very friendly and very nice of them. And we have asked for all of the related booths, Whiskers of Winfield, ours, to be placed near each other so that just like last year, we can have coverage of people moving in and out. I've also asked to be close to you guys, I have no idea if that's going to work out, but we'll see. Didn't work out that way last year. And then to Barb's point, our next meetings, September eleventh at six-thirty is the public hearing on the budget, as well as the public hearing and vote on the CIP. And then on September twenty-ninth at six PM is the meeting to adopt the twenty-twenty-six budget and at six-thirty would be the regular. Makes sense to everybody, did I say that right?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, sir, well, that's all I have under announcements, so I'm going to hand it back to you.
So any other discussion towards the board? There's anything from the guests?
Thanks for having us.
The meeting has been adjourned.